Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call this January 24th City Council meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. We will move into roll call. I will start with Councilman Loy.
Here.
Councilmember Kestie.
Present.
Councilmember Diamond.
Present.
Councilmember Henderson.
Madam Mayor, do you mind turning on your mic?
My mic is on. Can you not hear me? Councilmember Cock.
Present.
Councilmember Burns.
Present.
And Councilmember Lavaca has been excused. So we'll move right into approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I so move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Cock, seconded by Councilman Burns. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, items one through four. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pull item three for discussion.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion for items one, two, and four?
I'll make that motion.
All right. You have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Cox, seconded by Councilman Burns. Any discussion on items one, two, or four? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. If it is okay with you, Councilman Burns, we can actually add that. Do you want to discuss it now? Do you want to make a comment now?
Whatever's appropriate.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I actually just wanted to pull it to make sure that everybody in the council was comfortable with it. It was very vague, and I'd heard concerns expressed previously. So I just want to make sure that when we move forward with these grants, that everyone's good with it, and we're not just voting them through, so.
Okay. All right. Well, Councilman Burns is asking if there are any questions or concerns regarding the community development grant to the Old Mill Projects. Any conversation regarding that?
I read this on Friday. I just need a few seconds here.
Okay.
So just to be clear, this is similar to the historical machinery behind Joy's Bakery, right?
Yes, it is. Do you want to take this?
We do have machinery like this around town in various spots.
All right. Thank you.
Does everyone have a chance to review? Councilman Henderson?
So I've seen the industrial parks under the, essentially, the groundwork phase right now. So when are we going to expect to start seeing buildings going up there?
That I don't have an answer for.
Yeah, we'd have to get back to you on that. I'm not sure. I'd have to talk about planning.
And I'm new to council, so what is going in there?
It's basically an industrial park, just south of the high school.
Okay. Thank you.
And this would be essentially in the entry area to that, so on the street frontage.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I have, yes. As far as vagueness, I don't see this as being any more vague than others that we have seen put forward and pass. So the way that this has been going, I'm, it's already set precedent, so I would be fine with it.
Okay. Any other comments?
I think it's cool and unique to Seidrawully especially, unless you're talking about, like, old-school Issaquah. That's the only other place I'd see something like this. So, I mean, it's keeping within the city's history, so I'd be for it.
All right. Very good. Councilman, time?
I actually am in support of this one. I think that it would look really good coming in. Right now, there's nothing there, and it would bring people by to look, and it's cohesive throughout the town.
If there are no questions or comments, then do we have a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
All right. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Henderson, to approve the community development grant for the Old Mill Projects LLC. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. I am looking for, but I do not see him here, Brian Wolbert. He was going to give a presentation regarding the goodwill. Not seeing him, we will go ahead and move on to reports, and I will turn to you. Mr. Bush, do you have a report this evening?
No report this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the council members, Councilman Loy, do you have a report this evening?
I have nothing.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
No, I have nothing for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Diamond?
We had a strategic planning meeting, committee meeting, at five o'clock earlier today, reviewing where we were as far as our department operational plans, where we left off in the fourth quarter of 2023. And all of that will be coming forward and discussed further in February. So just a heads up on that. And then also, I've had a couple suggestions from constituents asking for possible, just a little more patrolling and police presence through downtown area and off Ferry Street and State Street. Just a little bit, little consistency coming through there. People a little concerned with the, some vehicles coming by a little more consistently than what would be normal, in their words, as well as after-hours type speeding and things that just don't quite seem as normal for that area at that time of night. So I've had two different people reach out to me with those concerns.
Thank you. Is there a way that they can call us so we can know when this is occurring?
Yes.
And just reinforce that, because a lot of times, if there's an issue, we'd like to handle it then if we could.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Nothing specifically has happened, but just enough to be a little bit concerning. But of course, I'll pass that along for them to call you specifically.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Henderson? Three minutes, or more? Whatever you need. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. The first one that I'd like to address is several of the citizens around my neighborhood spoke to me about the recent cold snap that we had. We were in the single digits for periods of the evening and not getting out of the high teens during the warmest part of the day. The complaints were of the infrastructure deficits that we kept seeing pushed to everyone via Skagit breaking and other media outlets on Facebook and Twitter and everything else. And seeing such a deficit and being asked to turn down our thermostats and restrict our usage of electricity and gas during those, with all the new development, they're concerned if we can afford new development on our already strained infrastructure. So that was one point that got brought to me. Another point by an interesting neighbor that I have about Skagit Transit. And he sees multiple daily routes, and there's nobody on the buses. Why do we have tax money funding transit that so little of people use? And he'd like information from the city on how to, how can we vote to lower the sales tax rate that goes to Skagit Transit? So I figured I'd just bring that up. Another concern was the new housing being built here in Seidrawully. And it's not affordable for anyone on the median household income in Skagit County of $75,000. Bucko Estates average new housings are 650-plus, and that's not affordable on the income. So they're wondering, who are these developments being built for? Because it's certainly not the people that live here. And why is the city trying to build more housing developments if they're already not affordable for the people already here? Another one is the traffic is horrible, and there's tons of speeding downtownship. And we kind of beat that one to death at our last meeting, but it still gets brought up almost on a every-other-day basis to me. So, sorry, Chief. I'm just saying what they said. And in more happy news, there was a district invitational swim meet in Anna Cortis, and the Seidrawully and Burlington combined team, because they, the school district shares a coach with both teams. So I got to go watch them swim in their swim meet last Saturday, and they did really well. And they're both a very small team, which is why they couldn't afford their own coach each. And the camaraderie was just wonderful. And then the last question I had, or the last question that was asked of me, was do our first responders, and most specifically, the firefighters, do they need to fall under the vaccine mandate for people who are looking to apply? Because it's a very important question to some of these people.
I can just answer that straight away, because the same question came up to me recently, and the chief responded that mandate is no longer in place.
Thank you. That's everything for me.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
No report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. And I only have a couple things. The first is, let me see if I can find it here. The goodwill is going to be doing a ribbon-cutting next Friday at 8:45. Everybody is welcome. And they will be opening the doors then at nine o'clock. But they will be, I think that this is going to be a great addition to the community. And also, there was a question regarding the strategic planning. We did talk about it at, or not strategic planning, it is strategic planning for the council. We talked about it tonight at the strategic planning meeting. And as was shared, part of the information that we're going to be talking about has to do with the park survey. And the park survey ends the end of this month. And in order to be able to pull all that information together and make sure that you have it in hand so that you can have discussion regarding it, we are going to move that to the 14th, so that everybody has all the information with that. Okay. And that is all I have for tonight. We will move on to public comment, and I have a couple who have signed up for public comment. The first is Val Mullen.
Is this on? Yes. I can't tell. Good evening. My name is Val Mullen. I'm from Seidrawully, and I just want to address something in the agenda tonight. According to the agenda, the city council will be having a first reading of their amended budget tonight. Included in that document is a provision to hire a human service, human resources manager for $109,000 per year, as well as a school resource officer. I oppose the inclusion of these positions in the amended budget. For one, I don't understand the urgency to include these positions in the amended budget. They should be scrutinized through the regular budget and normal budget process. Secondly, the voters just approved an increase in property tax to hire more firefighters. Why are taxpayers being asked for more money just two months later? Inflation is rampant in the area. We're not, we're being taxed more and more, and people just can't afford anything that's not completely necessary. Thirdly, I question whether these positions are really needed. Does this city need a human resources manager? Human resources is currently under the jurisdiction of the city manager, which is why this position was created in the first place. And a school resource officer will spend a significant amount of time in public schools. For the sake of taxpayers, I urge the Seidrawully City Council to rethink this hiring proposal and take the time to give it the normal due process. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Linnea, am I saying your name correctly? Linnea McCord.
My name is Linnea McCord, and I come from Skagit County, and I'm a friend of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about your proposal. While it might seem reasonable on its face, and maybe in the past it has been reasonable, it's totally unreasonable and unadvisable in today's volatile, financially-stressed environment. Starting at the federal level, the national debt is a staggering $34 trillion. Just, and it's up from six trillion, just under six trillion in 2000. This is unsustainable. We are currently paying $1 trillion in interest on that debt, adding more and more debt. Americans have become complacent about the numbers because they have no idea what a trillion is. So I'll help you out. A million seconds, just over 11 years. A billion seconds, just over 32 years. A trillion seconds, 32,000 years. And we owe $34 trillion. You get the picture. Ordinary Americans are facing skyrocketing mortgages, rent, food and gas prices, utility increases, and property tax escalations. I warn you, you're at the limit of property tax escalation, escalations. They are hitting the breaking point. For the first time in history, credit card debt in America, ordinary people, $1 trillion. Mortgage debt has surpassed $13 trillion, and that was in 2022. $1,000 car payments, cars being repossessed, car loans going into vault. 44 million Americans owe $1.7 trillion in student loans. Think they'll be forgiven? Think again. $3.1 trillion in corporate debts coming due 2023 to 2025. Banking crisis 2.0 underway. Billionaire CEO of Canor Fitzgerald in 2024 says, "Expect staggering defaults of $1 trillion in commercial real estate in the next 18 to 24 months." A whopping 38% of companies in 2024 say they're likely to have further layoffs. 52% are considering a hiring freeze. The city council has already been back at the public trough to get more money for firefighters. It is not lost on the voters that public safety personnel are being used to have voters cough up more money. That strategy is likely to lose its effectiveness in the future, as more and more Americans are watching much more carefully what all levels of their government are doing and not doing. The reality is, we all have to live within our means, and that includes government. It doesn't matter what good reason to spend the money right now is, especially when so many government entities in Washington State are blindly following the destructive policies of California. A word of warning to you from someone who lived many decades in California and had a front-row seat to the destructive policies of a failed government. I also have a California state pension, but I've never put it in my financial planning. Here's why. In just the space of one year, California has, budget has whiplash from a comfortable surplus to $68 billion deficit. California now holds the record for owing $1.5 trillion in pension obligations. However, in today's era of permanent crisis, bankrupt cities and other government entities will fast learn the lessons already painfully learned by private employees whose pensions and benefits were cut in bankruptcy. Public pensions and medical benefits, like those of private and benefit promises, are subject to the just kidding clause in American law. My term to describe it. The law doesn't call it that. Here's a basic rule of American law. When you are handling someone else's money, in this case, the taxpayer's money, you need to be careful, competent, and diligent in carrying out those duties. Live within your budget, just like the rest of us have to do now. You may have the power to ignore this advice, but never underestimate the backlash that you will face by an increasingly enraged population as the scandals continue to drip out, showing massive corruption, incompetence, and untrustworthy behavior in many of our formerly trusted American institutions. Let's make Seidrawully a beacon of common sense, government officials and staff who continue to take care of the duties and the responsibilities of the people. The people are awake, and we're paying very close attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to give public comment? All right. Seeing none, I will close public comment, and we will move on to public hearing. And tonight's public hearing is going to be regarding the budget amendment. And I will start out with Kelly, who will take us through this, and then we will do public comment for those who may wish to comment on that. And after that, I will open it up to the council for Q and A. Kelly?
Good evening, council. So the 2023-2024 biennial budget was adopted by council in November of 2022. Throughout 2023, we updated the 2023 portion of the budget, but have not touched the 2024 portion of the budget. This is a routine update, mid-biennium update of the budget. We planned, we typically have two to three budget amendments per year. Last year, we had three. We plan to have three this year as well. So just want to give you some background on budget amendments. Included in the packet is the, a couple different formats for showing you this information, similar to amendments of the 2023 budget. The first one is the ordinance summarizing the budget, budgeted revenues, budgeted expenditures, and projected excess and deficits related to those. Also included is a memo showing estimated beginning cash and investments, budgeted revenues, budgeted expenditures, and then estimated ending cash and investments by fund. I did want to note regarding the cash balances for these that we haven't fully closed out 2023. So these are estimates and not actuals. They may change a little bit after we've closed out 2023. We've also included the 2020 proposed budget changes. This is the big, long, 100-page document with very detailed descriptions of what has been adjusted with remarks. And then the very last two pages of that document is a summary of the original and proposed changes. Wanted to highlight a couple of things in there. There are quite a few changes. Again, like I said, this is the mid-biennium update, so that's to be expected. The first one is the increase in property tax. This is the council voting for the levy lid lift and voter-approved levy lid lift. That is included in this budget, as well as the related fire and EMS expenditures for eight new firefighter EMTs. There are no other increases to taxes beyond what has already been approved by the council, no increases to percentages to utility taxes, and no changes to percentages of sales tax or any other of the city's tax revenues, although we have reestimated what we expect to bring in. There are adjustments for the comprehensive plan and the climate action plan. There'll likely be further adjustments on those. Our interim community development director, Hiller West, has talked to the council about this before and likely will come back to discuss further. We've put what we think will occur in this budget. We've also included two new positions, one being an HR manager, and the second one being a school resource officer. And just wanted to note that the school resource officer was previously included in the Proposition 1 on the 2019 ballot for the police department. So just wanted to give you a little bit of background on that. Also made some updates to revenues and expenditures in our arterial street fund. Public Works Director has done a lot of work planning that out. So we've made some significant changes from what we had planned in 2022, get more up-to-date, realistic of what our projects will be. And we've also updated wage tables based on the results of labor negotiations and other wage information. Something we haven't included in the past, but we hope to continue including with budget information, is an FTE count to give you some perspective of the number of city employees we have, how many full-time, part-time, just to give you an idea of the scope of city employee work and payroll. Also included in here, I won't go over this part in detail, but just some information about some of the funds that may not be as straightforward if you're not familiar with those funds. Just one example is Fund 189. This is the American Rescue Plan Fund. This is our ARPA money, our federal money. We received one-time federal money in 2021 and 2022, and we will not receive any more revenue into that fund. We will only spend down the money we received. So that's just an example of a fund that you'll see is negative, because the expenditures exceed this year's revenue, but that's planned and to be expected. So wanted to give some context on that. And that's the broad overview.
Does anybody have any questions for Kelly? Go ahead, Councilman Burns.
My understanding was the school resource officer had been voted at 50%. Not that I'm complaining about the school district paying 75. I was just curious about the, am I remembering that wrong, or?
The numbers pretty much line up exactly with what we've calculated at 25%. I'm pretty sure that was what was in the original report, Chief.
Yeah, and the levy lid lift is a portion of that, but that was calculated as 25% as proposal.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councilman Cock?
Yes, I had a question. I was sort of surprised, does the Seidrawully School District have more than, even have a school resource officer now? I didn't know.
No, there is no school resource officer at this point.
Thank you.
One thing to note in the budget is we do have the expenditure for the resource officer and also the related revenue of 75% of that expenditure.
And has that been held off on for so many years because of the school? Or what's the reason that we haven't gone forward with this previously?
Yeah, the school district has had conversations with us off and on, but hasn't been to the point of really being ready to have an inter-local agreement that's voted upon. And it appears the school district is getting very close to that point. We heard today from the superintendent that it's looking very positive that they'll be ready to take some kind of action. So for that reason, we're putting this placeholder in the budget. But there's a separate action that will come to council. It's an inter-local agreement that would actually establish the program. So there'd be a lot more discussion at that time.
Thank you.
Councilman Henderson? Councilwoman Anderson?
Yes. So, chief, this is more directed at you. Just a couple of quick questions. What happens during the winter and spring break times and in the summertime? Is that an officer we can use?
Yeah, that'd be an officer we could use, regular patrol, assigned duties, right? So, the school has their winter breaks where their school staff has paid, basically their paid leave time, right? That would be presented back to us to either do training or work the road or whatever we need them to do at that point.
Okay. And just a couple more. Who would pay the insurance benefit in retirement? Would the school district assume 75% of that and we'd assume 25?
I think all the salary and cost and benefits are part of that 75-25 share. Obviously, we'd have to come into an agreement with the school district before we can move forward this position anyway, but that's how it would work out.
Okay. And so you already answered one of my other ones on that. And then my last question is, who would pay for the training and for the academy and for the vehicle that this officer would be using?
That's been coming up. As far as the equipment associated to that, we'd figure it out as far as the city costs would be ours. I think the vehicle right now, we'd use the existing equipment that we have, and it doesn't make any sense for the school district to be buying, purchasing firearms and such like that. That should mean the police property. But that's all going to get figured out into the interlocal agreement, what we actually agree on, what property is being purchased by who.
Okay.
So, to be clear, that's going to get figured out if we get to that point.
Could I ask one?
Yes.
Could I just get a short version of what is a school resource officer? Does he go from school to school? Do you hang around one school?
That, again, will be determined with the agreement with the school district, right? So, in my research of calls for service and stuff, I mean, basically identify the two areas in need of a school resource are the Cascade Middle School and the Seidra High School based on the call load that we go to those schools. In my point, I believe it should start at the high school. That's our highest call volume, where we have the most issues. But the middle school does have a need as well. So, yes, they could be going back and forth to schools, but that is, again, is going to have to be agreed upon, what makes the most sense and what the school district would agree on. It's a partnership that we'd have to agree on.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Yes?
Just a couple other highlights that I wanted to point out. They're not big dollar items necessarily, but there are two reductions that we've recommended as a part of this budget amendment that are noteworthy. One of them would require additional council action. We have a contract and interlocal agreement with the county for the Department of Emergency Management, essentially to provide emergency management services countywide. And the county already has a mandate by state law to do that. The understanding was the city would be receiving more services directly from the county than we've ever seen. And the chief and I, our chief and I, have had this discussion that we would come back under separate action with you to potentially eliminate that regional agreement. We still need to do more of our own emergency management work locally. So that's one of the things that we've included in our thinking, not for the first quarter because, you know, we kept that in the budget, but that is included for the last three quarters. That's about a $22,000 annual expense. The other one is the Economic Development Alliance of Skagit County. That one in there is about $9,000, and we benefit somewhat from regional activities that go on with EDAS, but the local benefit is something we've not been able to put our finger on. And so that's something that we've included in this budget amendment as well.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. Kelly, on, you were talking about Fund 301 and 302. That would be, I think, from what I heard you say, those would be making up some of what the deficit is. Is that, is the deficit that you're talking about Appendix A, the deficit of $4.486 million?
In Appendix A, you can see Fund 301 and 302 are our real estate excise tax funds. So we build up money in those funds over the years and then spend them on specific projects. So for 2024, we anticipate receiving $352,000 in each of those funds, but plan to spend 500 and, or, excuse me, $958,000 out of those funds, which is a deficit of $598,000 in each of those funds. However, we have built those funds up to, they have a cash balance to withstand that. And that's typically how we plan these funds. We build it up and spend it down, build it up, spend it down.
Okay, thanks. So that explains the excise tax for Fund 301 and 302. Can you put my mind at ease about the $4.486 million deficit for 2024?
The other numbers in there, the big ones, are the American Rescue Plan Act, so that's the ARPA federal money, about $477,000. The biggest one is the Sewer Capital Projects Fund. That's another fund we build up over time and then spend money out of that fund and have a, Mark may be able to speak more to the 2024 projects, but it's a similar situation.
Okay, so I see for the CIP, for the sewer, we're going to be running at a deficit of $1.3 million for that, right? So is that money that we have set aside in the CIP fund?
Yeah, you can see on the memo associated that none of the fund balances will go negative, that we will still have sufficient fund balances in all of these funds to cover those expenditures.
Okay, so.
So, yes, we do, yes, we do have the cash to cover.
Okay, so at the end of it, we'll be fine? So is there another appendix that shows at the end of it where our positive balance is going to be? Or is that somewhere buried in the 100 and something pages of?
It's right after the Appendix A. The next page is a memo. It's called the 2024 Budget Amendment Number One on page 31 of the PDF. Just gives another view. You can, Woody has it up on the screen now. Again, our estimated beginning cash for each of our funds are budgeted or proposed, it should say proposed budgeted, proposed budgeted revenue, proposed budgeted expenditures, and then where we project ending cash will be in each of our funds. And you can see, you can look down at those specific funds and see it's not, none of them are negative, and have a financially stable balance going forward. There is one fund, Fund 114 Law Enforcement Sales Tax. This fund will be at zero, but this is money we receive the revenues in from the state, and we immediately distribute it to Skagit County as part of an interlocal agreement with them. So you should always see, unless there's a timing issue, you should always see revenues and expenditures are the same and the fund balance is zero.
Can we keep going here?
If you have more questions.
Okay. So for the HR position that's being proposed, is this more of a, for you, Charlie?
Depends on the nature of your question. Yeah, I'm prepared to talk.
Financial in nature.
Okay.
So.
One of us will take it.
Where's the money? I went through it, it was a few days ago, but it seemed like it was $109,000 salary?
All-inclusive salary benefits for eight months of the year.
Eight months of the year, okay. And so we got the job description tonight. So at one point during the public hearing or the second reading, are we able to ask to pull things from that? From the?
From the budget amendment?
Right.
So I believe you can do that at any time. I would check.
Well, first, we need to have a, we need to have a public hearing on this. This, right now, is just about questions, and then we need to open the public hearing, and then there's going to be debate and conversation afterwards.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That was the city attorney.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
How did you, what was moved around financially to come up with the funding for an HR person full-time when we've been struggling and had to go out? Obviously, eight people, full-time firefighters, a lot more money, but we have known for, I mean, that was in the talks for about a year, and having new employees and going through the hiring process and all of that stuff is cyclical. So at what point did we, as a city or administration, decide that money was going to be moved around somehow and the funding was going to magically appear for this? Because the funding did not appear for this and did not exist for this the last time we discussed it. And so I'm wondering where funding came from to make it happen? What was pulled? What are we losing?
We've done a number of things. Every year, we reevaluate revenues and expenditures. So we've reevaluated what we anticipate receiving in revenues, including sales tax, what we, the trend of sales tax, also investment revenue, investing our funds appropriately, as well as rises in investment interest. And going through our expenditures, you know, every single year, we go through with a fine-tooth comb with all of the directors to prioritize items, and we discussed with the directors, and multiple people made some adjustments to line items in their budget. We talked to the fire chief about what's the impact to their budget of, you know, the eight new firefighter EMTs, you know, the police department, everywhere there were some minor adjustments, and you'll see those in the change, the original versus proposed.
Right, I see some of that. The only thing that I found that referenced anything in regards to money being redirected to HR was $25,000 from the general fund, but I didn't see anything else on here unless I missed it.
I don't think anything is like directly, we're reducing this line item to make a human resource manager position fit. But as we went through the budget, it was a priority of management that an HR director was needed. And as we went through the budget, it allowed us to still have a positive fund balance in our general fund and hire an HR manager. I don't know if Charlie or the mayor want to speak further to that, but.
I did mention some things we removed from the budget to help offset. So the DEM money, as well as EDAS money, we felt those things were less priority than the need for an HR manager. So that's one of the adjustments we made. But to Kelly's point, some of our revenues came in higher than anticipated, and it's hard when you're trying to forecast your revenues in 2022 to know exactly where you're going to land in 2024. So that's part of the story as well. And that's a story we haven't experienced in a while, so we were happy to see that.
Councilwoman Loy?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a few questions. Start off with, why have a, why do we need a HR director? Why can't we have an HR person or do you have different titles for them, you know, and the far more affordable? Second question is, I'm assuming that the $109,000 is the salary and benefits for a HR director? And we haven't got together to figure out what this guy's jobs yet, but how did you decide how much he's going to be paid for? You know how much he's going to, for what he's going to do?
Yeah, we can talk about that a little bit. So we looked at the market, and we looked at our comparable cities, and we looked internally at equity as well. We decided we, it wasn't appropriate, we didn't think, to go to a director level, so we brought it down to a manager level. We know we have a need for a full gamut of HR services, and for a city of our size, we are beyond the point of needing a full-time HR person. Right now, we've got it split partly between myself, partly between our payroll person. The payroll job has increased in scope, and so there's a need for more payroll time. That person gets crunched frequently on having to deal with payroll and not having enough time for that, and having to deal with HR stuff and not having enough time for that. I experienced a similar one, where there are other things like council support and making sure these meetings are, we're prepared for these and working on strategic issues and other things. And that's a pull, plus some regional stuff from what we do, what I need to do with HR. So that is a real challenge, because we end up essentially putting out fires and doing directly what needs to be done in HR to the point that we can. But even with that, there are things that are always changing in HR. There are updated laws, there are policies that need to be written and rewritten, things like that, that we have a really hard time keeping up with. And by my estimation, looks like my position was created in the code in 1991 with some duties around personnel. It doesn't appear we've made any other investments in HR since then. So the city at that time had roughly, just estimating here, about 6,000 people. That was in the 1990 census, and about 50 employees is my best guess. And at this time, we're pushing 140 people, when you look at our part-time folks, our volunteers, and we've got a population nearly at 13,000, likely to top that this year. And so the stretch is normal because we have more people, and laws have not gotten simpler since the early 90s. We just got our Personnel Policy Manual updated for the first time since 1992, and that was a huge lift for the organization, and it's going to be hard to sustain it. So we are stretched. We really have a need. And having an HR professional who has that specific skill set, that specific training, it's not something we have on staff at this time. I'm a generalist. Our HR assistant is, didn't come with any HR experience, has been learning on the job. We're doing the best we can. We rely a lot on our city attorney for help, but there is a significant need here. It's a risk management area for the city, and, you know, each year it gets harder because we're growing.
How long before you think you'd need a second person in the HR department?
I can't say exactly. It partly depends on how far we grow, but, you know, I would like to see at least a halftime position at some point come along to support the HR manager if we're able to get that satisfied. That'd be dependent upon budget and a variety of other things.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question, Charlie? You had mentioned risk management. How does that get impacted without a dedicated HR professional?
Sure. Well, you know, we have a risk pool. We have Cities Insurance Association in Washington. They offer a lot of good trainings, and we've tried to take advantage of those because we pay for them essentially through our membership. So risk management is done somewhat there, but the coordination comes from me for a lot of that stuff, and would come from our HR manager as well in that case. But we're not able to do a lot of additional proactive trainings. So in cities with a full HR function, you're going to see a whole ton of trainings that are available to employees that are really targeted towards some of our needs, that many of them that are put on by our own staff. Bottom line is, we're not able to be as proactive as we should be. We're not even close to that. We're reactive for the most part. We are treading water. We are trying to keep up, and it is really hard, and it's the kind of stuff that we all lose sleep over because what if we miss something? What if we didn't do this? I sent an intern around last summer to look at our boards that we have around the city that have employment information on them that are required by law. A bunch of them were outdated, you know, and so that's the kind of stuff that's easy to have slip by when you're dealing with exactly what you need to do with every day, and there's just not enough time. day, and there's just not enough time.
Another question, what about recruitment? How could this person? I, I looked on the city website and saw quite a few openings, and I know we have the eight new firefighter EMTs coming in. How would they help? Because, you know, getting the best people makes a huge difference in how efficient an organization runs.
Yeah, and HR professionals are going to be able to help us in a variety of ways in that area. One of them is being able to do more direct outreach, depending upon the position, to candidates. One of them's going to be staying really current on recruitment methods, because part of the HR profession is, is recruitment. And so they're going to have a lot of the latest tools and techniques that, that are hard for us to have time to research and, and know about. Likely some technology and process improvements that will help the recruitment process as well, be more smooth, be a better experience for candidates, and different ways to market our, our positions, I think would be a part of that as well. So I, I see a variety of benefits, for sure. My experience with HR professionals is that they will help you find better candidates, and they'll help you find them quicker.
All right, yes, Councilman Burns.
Can you talk about how, well, I'm trying to make sure I understand what you're expecting of an HR manager? And I'm curious about how this would work for current employees, as far as if this would be a resource for them, if they have concerns about their job, or someone that they need to go to, to speak with about any issues that might arise? So I'm wondering if that's something that you would expect of an HR manager?
Yeah, HR is available for people with concerns, and is kind of a neutral broker in the organization. One of the challenges of having HR partly consolidated with my position is I wear many hats, and there are some conflicts there. So there may be situations where people do not feel comfortable coming to me as the city administrator, because I'm the city administrator. And if we had a separate HR person, they're a neutral broker, they're essentially like a third party in the organization, there is more comfort there oftentimes. So that's going to be, I think, a key benefit. I don't know that I fully addressed your question there.
Well, I did have the concern. When this first came up, I was thinking about the, the ability for someone to voice a concern about their job or to mediate. And so in my experience with other positions I've held, HR manager is that intermediary, whether it be between two employees of equal level or between you and management. It's usually good to have that resource there. But I do appreciate the idea of hiring as well, because we are lacking in a number of departments, from what I've seen, and I'm not sure how much they're going to actually generate the ability to draw in more people, but maybe that is another ability to find them.
Yeah, the intermediary benefit is definitely a key one. And I, I would also say HR professionals are allowed, are going to allow you, because of that communication they're going to have with employees, and the time for that communication that's more free. And that's the other challenge, is I'm hit and miss a lot, and it's just by the nature of the work I do. But that person is going to be able to be more proactive, and, and this is my experience of HR professionals. They will learn about things before they become issues, and they'll be able to talk with the manager or supervisor, talk with me if they need to, and, and help to get ahead of a situation before it becomes a bigger issue. That's a huge benefit, and, because once things become bigger issues, they consume a lot more time and resources, and ultimately could, could result in, in consequences for employees and the organization that none of us want to experience.
I definitely have concerns about the extra cost, but I also have concerns about what extra cost we might incur with those kind of conflicts of interest, with you wearing two hats and the situations that might arise as well. So I'll consider that. Thank you.
Charlie, can I add something for you?
I have some more, if I might. Charlie, Mr. Bush, has a feasibility study been done about outsourcing HR tasks as needed? So we just, we just got your list of, of essentially a draft of what you drew up for the HR's job description. So I see, I see the word develop in there a lot, interpret a lot, and review a lot. Is that not, have we done a feasibility study on outsourcing HR tasks to a professional HR company who, I don't know if, if the city has much experience in using those companies, but they're actually quite cost-effective and efficient? And it would cut down massively on labor costs, and we wouldn't have to pay them benefits and insurance or anything.
Yeah, I think as a city, our, our need is to have somebody here on site, so that, that would be a critical piece of it. And perhaps with outsourcing, we'd, we'd still be able to do that. But we, we really have a need to have somebody here on site who can be interacting with employees, interacting with all of us and doing things. We've looked at our comparable cities, so we've looked at the other cities that we compare to, and all of them have at least one full-time HR position. All of them had either a manager or director. One had a specialist, so that was the exception. So our counterparts, at least in local government, have not found a good outsourcing option. So that's the extent to which we've looked at it. We could certainly do more research if that was an, an area the council wanted us to explore. But it's, it's not common, certainly, for local government to do that.
So if there are no more questions and comments, I can open this up for the public hearing. We did have a public hearing signed, and nobody signed up for it. But is there anybody in the council who would like to come forth and make public comment regarding the budget amendment? Okay, hearing and seeing none. We can move on. This is a first read, so it will be coming back to you. There is no action that is required tonight. So with that, we will move on to.
Is this the part where we can ask to, Nikki said later during the thing? Is this where I would ask?
Well, yeah, but we, we don't have to take action tonight.
We don't have to, but we can ask for something?
Yeah.
Make a motion? Yes?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'd make a motion to remove the HR position from this 2024 budget amendment. I'd like that to be a standalone item that we would discuss further later.
Okay. So do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Henderson to make the, to pull from the budget amendment the HR individual and make that a standalone? So you would like that to come back before the council at another time?
Separately from the 2024 budget?
Mayor, can I make a comment regarding?
Yes.
That? And Nikki, please correct me if I'm wrong. We can't adopt the budget in increments. It's, they're at the fund level, and we can, we can remove the item from the budget, but the budget, or but the HR manager position can't be.
Separated from this budget.
Right. Like, we, we can discuss, you know, whether we will hire an HR manager, but we couldn't bring back solely the HR manager position without also.
A budget amendment.
With, without a budget amendment. Thank you, Nikki.
Correct. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
So then you can't take that off so that we can potentially pass the budget without the HR being on there at all? Can we take it off, off the table, period? Is that an option?
Yes, yes. But just saying that HR man, if the HR manager position can't really be discussed without the corresponding budget position. So just saying that we would have to bring back the budget discussion if we completely remove it.
It's gone.
Can I ask you in simple terms, Son Kelly, if I might? So if, if we strike this from the 2024 budget, the one that we're speaking of right now, the amendment, when is the next budget amendment that we would talk about? Because we do, do about three per year?
Right.
So if, if we could, if we could get this in early, have a good discussion, do a good feasibility study, open an honest dialogue, very transparent about the whole thing, when would the next one be?
We don't have it currently scheduled, but it would likely be within three to five months.
Okay.
Is there any reason we couldn't do it in three to five weeks? That date is not set in law, is it?
No, it's not.
So we can set it whenever we want?
Right.
So I can make a motion to pull the HR completely off it?
We, we did, we did. It's, it's been, it's been motioned and seconded, and.
Okay. So then for clarification, I guess what I would like to know is, there, we could go ahead and pull this from the budget, but we don't have to approve or disapprove the budget tonight? That can be set aside, correct?
That's correct.
We haven't had our public hearing yet, have we?
We're doing it right now.
I didn't hear you open it.
Yeah, I opened it up.
And then we'll have a second reading later on, and the second reading won't contain the HR position?
If approved by council.
If, yes.
If this motion passes?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So we do have a motion by Councilman Henderson and seconded by Councilman Loy to pull the HR position off of the 2024 budget amendment. Is there any more discussion regarding this? If not, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So motion carries. We will pull the, the HR position off of the 2024 budget amendment. Okay, and we will bring this budget amendment back next time, probably on the 14th, correct? We'll see it on the 14th again. Okay, moving on then to the master fee schedule. And I believe the master fee schedule is you, Kelly? Thank you.
This is the second read of the master fee schedule. We made a couple of changes from the first read, primarily in the building, planning and engineer fee schedule regarding fire permitting fees. The, we also, upon council request, included two versions of the master fee schedule, one with markup, so the red in the master fee schedule is the revised rate, and the green was the, the previous rate. And we've also included a clean copy that can be posted on the website. Just a reminder of some of the items that we've changed were the 2024 utility rates that were previously passed by council, adjusted a flat fee for facility monitoring, Riverfront Park and Bingham RV Park fees and impact fees. We've included a section on public records requests. This is a new from the previous reading. Attachment A in the document is the 2024 transportation impact fee rate update, and then attachment B is the building and planning and engineering fee schedule. One thing I also wanted to know is we did find one item that we did not update throughout the building, planning and engineering fee schedule for fire permitting is the fire construction permit fee. We would also like to update that to $60 per hour to be consistent with all the other updates. So if the council so chooses to approve the master fee schedule, it would, I'd like to recommend, including in the motion, that the fire construction permit fee be updated to $60 per hour as well.
All right. And do you have any questions? Yes, go ahead.
With the, that one, your mark for the fire construction schedule fee, I'm unfamiliar with what that is. Could you?
That was put together by Building and Planning and our Assistant Fire Chief. I have no further information beyond what they have provided for this. So I don't know if anyone else on the council or staff know, but that was put together by our Assistant Fire Chief, Jerry Gardner.
We can bring that information back, though. We can gather that information and bring it back, if you so wish. This is the second read. It doesn't necessarily mean that you have to approve the master fee schedule tonight. So there is time, if you'd like to do that.
I'd like to know what it's for specifically.
Okay. All right, we will do that.
Okay.
Are there any other, while we're here, are there any other questions or comments regarding the master fee schedule? Go ahead, Councilman Burns.
Merely, then I'd just like that number included in the packet, so that we're fully transparent for the public on what we're requesting. So, thank you.
The fee, just as a, the fee is updated in several places in the, there's a table with a bunch of information, and it's 50, it's updated to $60 in maybe seven or eight places, and then not updated in one location.
Thank you.
Just to give some context.
Missed that line. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no questions or comments, and if the council does not want to move forward with a motion, we're going to set this aside? Is that good? Good for everyone? Okay. Then we will move on to the new business. New business is the lodging tax. That's first on the schedule here. Again, Kelly?
Yes. So I'm sorry, I forgot to print off my page, Charlie. Do you mind?
Yep.
So the city collects lodging tax from different locations. Thank you. And we use that money to grant awards to agency, or to community, generally to community groups. We send it to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, I believe, the first meeting of January, or the last meeting of December. We sent the council-approved list to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. The committee met on January 10th. They recommend a list of awards to provide to applicants. The total list of applicants, we received seven applications for lodging tax totaling $45,500. We had, we had $45,000 to give, so the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommended that all of the awards be, all the applications be given in full, with the exception of one. The Cedar Woolley Public Works Department submitted for $10,000, and they adjusted that down to $9,000. So the committee is recommending grants of $44,500. The council has the authority to approve these grants to all or none of the applications, but can only give funding to applications that have been approved by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. So just a little background on that, we've included the minutes for that meeting, which includes a list of all of the recipients. The list is very similar to what has been awarded in previous years, and Woody has it up there on the screen.
So does anybody have any questions for Kelly? Yes, go ahead.
I'd just like to recuse myself from this, please.
Thank you.
What was the justification of providing lodging tax to an entity outside of Cedar Woolley?
The committee discussed that at length, and that there are many members of our community that participate, either in the planning, you know, the Lincoln Theater, for example, they act in those, those shows, and that Skagit County is a, you know, a good community, and that there are benefits to providing lodging tax to those, to those organizations. And the mayor was at that meeting as well. So anything you want to add?
Yeah, so I, I think one thing that I thought was really beautiful is, and they, they work with the children in our committee too, in, in our community too. So it is a partnership, actually, between our community and the Lincoln Theater, and it has been for many years. And actually, this is the first time in a long time that they've actually come to us and asked for funding, and it's not very much, as you see. It's kind of a fraction of what everybody else is asking, but because they support us in many ways, we, the whole committee decided that they wanted to support the But because they support us in many ways, we, the whole committee decided that they wanted to support the Lincoln Theater. That's where it came from.
Who is on the committee?
The committee is made up of members or representatives who pay lodging tax. We tried to get two of those. We reached out in several avenues, and only were able to get one member from a organization or business that pays into lodging tax, and then two members from the community who may use, or who would be candidates to using those funds. So we'll have it here on the list. Dottie Chandler from Lager Rodeo, Jeremy Kindland from the Sejowoli Market, or the Farmers Market, and Scott Riedel. He runs an Airbnb in the city limits, as well as the mayor sat as the elected official.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So is there a motion to approve the lodging tax grants that have been requested?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Cock, to approve the lodging tax grants. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Moving on to the sidewalk municipal code, ordinance 206424. This is a first read, although I think you may be, are you going to be looking for action tonight, Mark?
No, first read is ultimate. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I want to give a shout out to Nathan Salsina. He took the lead on this and put the program together that you see tonight, and I believe he's listening in tonight. And if you have any questions that are beyond my knowledge, I will certainly request that we involve him in the discussion as well. So this particular ordinance and resolution, which we're proposing to you tonight, is something we have long needed in public works in Sejowoli. As you know, we have many sidewalk walks that are 80 and 100 years old in the older parts of town in various streets of disrepair. We have issues with tree root heaving that happens with these. We have made some efforts to address these over the years, but resources, as you know, are annually very tight. And about three years ago, we passed our American Disabilities Act Transition Plan, which was a requirement of the state. And coming out of that, we've been focusing pretty successfully on dealing with repairs to handicap ramps at many of the corners. We generally attack those as was anticipated in the plan as we build projects around town. We've been pretty successful with that, as you know. So we've done, had some significant progress addressing the ramps themselves. But the sidewalks that are between those ramps are another story, and we have some that are in pretty poor condition. What this policy is meant to do is to clean up and provide a methodology for Nathan's department to deal with sidewalks when we become aware of situations where they're hazardous, dangerous. The ordinance as it exists right now goes back to 1913, and it's actually pretty typical of ordinances in the state of Washington, and I'm sure more afield than that as well, in that they do put the responsibility for the repair and maintenance of sidewalks with the adjacent property owners. Adjacent property owners are not real excited about stepping up and doing these things, as you can imagine. This revision that we're doing, or suggesting to council, is to provide a more organized methodology for us to react when we, when we have to, when we're notified that there's a dangerous sidewalk situation that needs to be addressed. We have a notification that we will give to the property owners, reminding them of their responsibilities, setting a timeline for action on it. And the policy that we also have in here in the form of the resolution also provides a little bit less painful way of them dealing with those situations when they come up. So first, the ordinance itself is an update of the 19 and 13 ordinance that has been in place for years, that gives us a better organized methodology for notifying the adjacent owners when the situation arises. Then the resolution adopts a policy that we've put together that is an update of what we've had for some years on how we, how we can partner with the public to do the repairs to these sidewalks. We've had a program that Nathan's been sponsoring for some time that's had some success at, we call it our Sidewalk Replacement Management Policy. May have the wording a little off on that, that we basically offer when a property owner approaches us that has a bad sidewalk and they want to voluntarily replace that. We will remove the sidewalks and dispose of the old panels, and we'll provide the base rock for installing the new sidewalk. Then the owner would hire their own contractor to do that particular work. And it knocks off a fair chunk of the cost of the sidewalks, and it also gets them in a safer situation quicker, partnering that way. Under the proposed policy that you have in your hands tonight, we go one step farther, and we've made the existing policy our option one, and we have an option two where we offer to prepare an estimate for the owner and enter into a contract with them. That would then be something that we, either with our own forces or with a contractor, which we would use on, an on-call contractor to actually schedule and replace the sidewalk itself. We think that would result in a lot less, more, a lot less difficulty for the owner to get the work done in a timely manner, and it also would allow us to both do the work that we've already been doing, but have the opportunity of putting together a number of these at one time and using the economy of scale that that would allow. So that's the purpose for this tonight in the first read, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have or flesh that out a little bit farther. And Nathan is available as well.
All right, are there any questions, Mr. Cassidy?
So how much, give or take, you know, would it cost to, for someone to replace the little bit of section in front of their house?
Oh, we're probably talking $10,000 to $20,000 for a block of sidewalk. So if somebody had just in front of their house, it'd be a fraction, a portion of that, I guess you might say. It can be expensive, especially if there's a tree involved. That can really run the cost up. And with that as well, the city tries to be proactive. The ordinance or the code says basically the same thing with trees. Street trees that are on the adjacent property or in the, or in the strip between the sidewalk and the street are the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. Over the years, we've, we've done things like provided drop boxes so that they can cut the trees up and put them in, and participated in that manner. But that's, that's an idea of what that costs. Nathan can chime in if he has a better feel for it than that. Nathan?
Yeah, you know, I actually, it's a very good point, and I can put something together for next meeting. I actually haven't, I could go out and do an example sidewalk for council to see, kind of get an idea of what it would cost, but I have not done that. Very good point.
And I should mention also the budget implications of that, this. I discussed it in the memo. We have been budgeting about $31,000, $3200 a year for the existing sidewalk repair program that Nathan's ran. And we have four or five people that take advantage of that in a given year. Some years less, some a little bit more. So it's not a huge program, but you know, it is useful, and it is being used. We're thinking with the new opportunities here, and also the fact that we're going to have to step up our game a bit and get a little more proactive with this, that that's going to go up a fair amount. We'll have to be careful how we market and manage that just because of our own limitations on workforce at being able to support these things. But it's a pretty important thing for us to do. It is, as Nikki will certainly point out to you if you ask, another liability issue for us that we simply need to address. And I should say also, we've modeled this particular ordinance and the resolution on a program that Mount Vernon has in place and has been using successfully for years. Other jurisdictions have them. We've looked at a number of them. City of Seattle has a pretty good program for doing this as well. So anyway, we've put a lot of work into this, and we recommend it for your consideration.
All right.
And again, this is just the first read tonight.
Councilman Henderson?
Two-part question. Thanks, Mark, for the presentation. The first, I've noticed I'll kind of out myself. I saw some blue chalk on my sidewalk, and I know I'm on the chopping block here, but is there different, is there different grades of sidewalk repair that might need to happen? Because, for instance, last summer, City of Burlington Public Works, we hired a crew to come out and smooth over rough edges and areas that people could trip over. And it was a very successful program and kind of prolonging and keeping some of the life into some of our sidewalks. Is, do you guys have like a rating system on if it's a full replacement or not?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, council member, because Nathan has, just last council meeting, you passed a sole source for a company that does that, precision concrete cutting. And we had a pilot program in 2023 where we used them to come out and take a few blocks and look at them and recommendations on what they could do with the sidewalk grinding process. So for sidewalks that are, have raised lips that are over a quarter of an inch, that's kind of the metric on that, but are not more than an inch, it works quite well to just grind them down. We actually have a grinder ourselves, but it's pretty limited in what we can do with it. We do deploy that some. They're, they're really set up for that, and so we did a couple of blocks last fall. Nathan fleshed that out a little bit more in a minute. And, and we're in the process of surveying right now for this year. We budgeted money to do that, and we're planning to do that on an annual basis so that the walks that are not too bad that we can do with this process, we just take care of it within our existing budget. So, you know, and that relieves that burden from our adjacent property owners. Nathan, you want to talk a little bit more about that? Tell them where we're planning to do those things and what's going on right now?
Sure. Yeah, so the blue paint that council member mentioned, that's, that was the survey crew markings. They've just been out the last couple of days surveying those areas, so it's a funny coincidence. But yeah, so we're going to do another, another section of basically the parade route we did from Ferry Street to Haynes last year as a pilot program, just to see how that process worked. And this year, we're going from Haynes all the way to Township on both sides of Ferry. And then if we have any budget left over after that section's completed, then we're going to kind of work outward to the side streets. And then there's also a couple of problem spots in the downtown Central Business District area that we're having them look at as well. But it's the same firm, Councilman Henderson, that Burlington used.
Good, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
The second part of my question, Mr. Freiberger, is, I know we've been doing a lot of transportation improvement projects, and is there, is there anything in existence for the current infrastructure in the older part of the city that we could get those kind of transportation improvement grant funding to mitigate the cost of the sidewalk program on the taxpayers?
So, thank you for asking that question. I mentioned in the memorandum that one other tool that we have available to us is what's called a local improvement district. Many of the sidewalks and curbs have been built in the city and the roads themselves in that manner in years, decades past. And that's, that's a tool that we could use for local access streets. For our local access streets, which are a lot of our problem sidewalks, by the way, there's simply no grant money available for that, and that has to be done through our local funds. So it really is difficult. You probably won't hear much more from me on that, but as, as you get a new director in here in the not-too-distant future, we're going to be looking for somebody that's got some experience with that, because that's, that is a tool that's really important. There are some streets, Nelson's a good example, and some of the others that, but the schools that are just in really poor shape. And it would be extremely difficult, even with our program we're talking about, to take care of them in any kind of timely manner. So I, I am recommending that, or I will be suggesting through my transition, that that be looked at, in particular on Nelson Street. We are going to do a couple of blocks this summer. We had some TIB Complete Streets money that we were able to put into that, and we'll continue to pursue that program. That one, that one we can use on local access streets as well to do what we can in that, in that regard, and leverage those funds with the LID type of thing to do something like a six- or an eight-block project all at once that would really spiff up an area. The mayor and I have talked about, a number of times now, about Talcott Street and the condition of that, especially from 7th to Township, that it's a, it's a really big project, and we generally budget about $150,000 a year for overlays and stuff, and that project is going to be $300,000 per block. And so it's just beyond the ability of us to do with our existing revenue source. And so that's, that's going to have to be looked at in the future to get some of the older sidewalks and streets back up to shape.
Yeah, safety's a big issue. That's something that we've had a lot of conversation about. We just don't have the funding to do, though, what needs to be done. And also on the sidewalks pertaining to the sidewalks, even the children walking to school, sometimes it's dark, and you know, the sidewalks are not in good shape. So it is a concern. It's a safety concern, and we do have a lot of conversation about it. Councilman Burns?
I do like this program. I just wanted to check in with you, Nathan, make sure this is going to be more work for you and your crew. Are you comfortable with the added workload that we'd be giving you?
Oh, yeah. You know, we got a lot of bad sidewalks, and it's just, we're just going to have to bite the bullet and make it happen. It's just what we have to do. But yeah, we, you know, we've got it set up so that it's kind of at our discretion as to when we do it. So if we get a complaint, we'll go out, we'll immediately mitigate the hazard with, with paint. You know, we'll mark the hazard. If it's something simple that we can maybe fix with some asphalt, we'll do that. But as far as, you know, scheduling the work and getting it done, it's really the code or the program that we were establishing really leaves it up to us to figure out when we can fit it into our schedule. So, yeah, I'm totally comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you.
And again, we anticipate having a small works roster contractor that can, we can bundle some of these together and do them in an efficient manner as well, so.
Councilman Dunn?
If we're able to do that, are we able to use some of the allocated ARPA funds to put towards that, to offset the costs of the homeowners? It's not allocated, a lot of it's not allocated, and it, it's going back to, it came out of taxpayers' pockets. It should go back to the taxpayers in one way or another, in my opinion. And if we can alleviate their costs for an issue that may or may not even had anything to do with them, it happens on sidewalks, wear and tear over time, and they may be, you know, second, third, fourth homeowners of this home on this street. Some of these homes on these streets are 100-plus years old. And not their fault, the sidewalk ends up in the condition it does. So anything we can do to alleviate the stress on them, would that be something that we could use to allocate that? We have those funds till 2026.
We can, our ARPA fund is lost revenue fund, so we can spend it, besides like about five categories of things, we can spend the ARPA money on anything that the general government can spend money on. We do have a question out to the state auditors about a new rule that was in place regarding committing those funds. We have to commit them by the end of 2024, so by the end of this year, and how strict that commitment has to be. So we have that outstanding question. We want to get answered from the state auditors. So we have that outstanding question we want to get answered from the state auditors before we move forward with adjusting our ARPA plan. The other thing to consider is if we pay for one homeowner's sidewalk, what are the, you know, legal impacts of not paying for someone else's? But that's definitely an area we can discuss.
That I can understand, but could we create a, I mean, the Business Development Committee created a grant program, couldn't we create the same thing for homeowners within a timeframe, allocating the funds and then also allowing that to offset? It doesn't have to be their complete cost, but something to offset those costs? I mean, there's people out there right now living paycheck to paycheck, and to have a, you know, $2,000 sidewalk repair could be detrimental to them. You know, so I'm just looking at the big picture there and how we can offset that, knowing that we do have those funds sitting there that did come from taxpayers regardless of how anybody wants to look at it.
Yeah, that's potentially an idea. I think it just has to be fair and equitable as much as possible. And so you've got to put some guardrails on it.
Yeah, something to thought, something to think about. Thank you.
In terms of such funding, could be priority be given to people with mobility issues? I mean, that fits right in with ADA, so persons with disabilities, senior adults, that kind of thing.
Well, I could see a targeted program. The timing is going to be the tricky part. Once Kelly's got an answer back from the AG or whoever has to answer that, we'll know better. But a targeted program where we could advertise something, we have some funds, come and talk to us about repairing your sidewalk, that would probably make some sense. How extensive of a response we'd get, I really don't know, but I'm sure there would be some. So, yeah. I guess we can report back to you on that after Kelly does the additional research on that.
Okay. If there is nothing else, this is a first read and it will be coming back to you on the 14th, most likely. Moving on to information only, there is quite an extensive police staff report. It's quite informative. If you haven't had a chance to peruse it yet, I would encourage you to do that. Next, we are going to be going into executive session. Two matters. The first is a discussion with the legal counsel about current or potential litigation, and this will fall under RCW 4231101I. The second will be a discussion of the property acquisition, RCW 4231101B. And it is 7:32 right now, and we will take, let's take 20 minutes, so it'll be 7:52 when we come back. And if we need more time, I will come back and let you know that, so.
So I thought Monday?
Interesting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, there are concerns, but this is really the process, too. If I have a presentation scheduled Wednesday, I'm just going to be like, I'm going to figure out, I'm going to figure out, we have public aid added, so I'm going to figure it out by sometime, if I have a real one. So it takes some time, but those things you got to like straighten out. There's a lot of talking about to do. So even though we have it, you know, once approved, this project, in case it does happen this year, highly likely it's going to be a back-up decision. And then, you know, we also want your public too, so opening up the public to see what their questions are. So it's going to take some time.
Yeah, I mean, to go back to Tennessee, we talked about that, I don't know, maybe we'll, just whether or not, you know, we create a program about having someone in place that is responsible. I would add full trust for apartment itself.
Trust, trust around it, so much, I'm not sure, we refer, you know, like, I'm sure this is still a monster, but those kind of things are happening quite frequently. So, okay, maybe a threat, but you can't just dismiss it, you may, the period, right, in staff, students, and the area, and, you know, it's, you know. Go ahead, there is, there was, not the public game fight, just, just, actually, recently, September, this, this year, where they had videos of it, they were going to confront the people who were still, who knows, like, they're confronting, they're, they obviously told us, they left. Well, that good, you know, for your third year, motivating our staff, people, people who are, who are, who are, yeah, so nice to say, nice to say, guys. So, I mean, you know, the whole fact that having a spiritual operators is more, much than building relationships, maybe that will make it comfortable, like, hey, there was something still on the line, hey, I heard this, I think, which, you know, having a room, it was important. And just the presence of, having a, a piece of our department is to deter itself, that , particularly, in some type of, instructing process, probably on clean off, back to their perspective, on, for, for justice system, for communication, I said, hey, it could work if it were, if we're, you know, they, they, they don't have to say, oh, you know, hey, communicate around it, just, just being, being transparent, you're kind of, you know, so, you know, just, you're normal people.
Well, come on, Mark.
Oh, yeah, I guess not.
It's an exception.
No, it's, it's, I could see, I don't want to spend money on that. I could know that, like, it's something where they feel it's needed. They're probably happy with the service they received back, but at the same point, well, it takes time. We're at the school every day, you know, the school's every day, every day, maybe. Oh, actually, Chris wrote to me, like, hey, that was weird, I didn't have to apologize to him. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you have to have some joy when you have people who are like, why are you spending so much money? And when you're like, we don't spend money, it's actually property owner's fault. Then they're like, I don't want to pay you this shit, so.
That'd be best, that's the sense between police and fine. What, like, do you guys feel, you know, not being a, a state?
Oh, no, I mean, it's a big thing for, I mean, state law, if we give a gentle officer and, I don't know, there's how, all it presented to the public, not anywhere as far as self-tax to, oh, fuck, this is, I don't see that.
Yeah, I think we're understaffed, overall, within, I just want to say, we have, all the, 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 we're understaffed, we need to, we need to, we need to, yeah, we budget for 40,000, so five, six, seven.
budgeting, we're, 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 we have nineteen units, we've tried to hire them, because, uh, it's just, it's just, uh, you've got, we have, we're, 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 last, last year, we, uh, one officer on the, uh, uh, March two, two, uh, just, uh, we, we, that, that, making four years, and, and, I think, it's just, one, you take one off the road, um, and then, and then, and then, uh, three, three , two, just ask, you send, you get through, but at the same time, we're, we're officers.
Counsel is still in executive session and will be coming back out at about 7:56.
She wants to go and fire him, you know, about. We, we said, I think, um, so, we, um, we got requested, uh, whoever's, whatever you think, we, we, we should, uh, uh, great, we're, 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 we're gonna present for you guys, it's, 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 I guess, it helps, uh, put out the area that we're, we're not.
We could use a, a higher, a greater, a more, a, 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 so, we're having a struggle, counsel, we do stuff, there's our program, they don't decide, um, at times, what we, they're having the same standard.
They're, um, and they're not paid, right? So, that's a struggle, in itself, who's going on with their time, uh, to do that, I mean, it takes a sort of, they do that, off, off, they're, they're, and then they have to work, uh, to do that. So, recover two shifts a month, or four and a half shifts a month, that, at the same time.
Do they get paid for the captainship, like, insurance?
Yeah, so they're, they, you know, they get paid for, like, off, like, actually, do you, like, whether it's, uh, can you set up, is, have, a, a, possibly, possibly present for us, do you mind, um, if it was a, like, or if it was uncovered, over time shift, that, um, a guild has, for priority rights to, for, 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 so, you know, time, you, you, uh, for this, that, that, for, uh, provisional, we've been provisional for a while, it's just basically the same thing, where if they're actually certified officers, it's just, uh, they get paid with this, a certain, but they don't have, they don't have, they don't have to, um, usually, that was one of our, um, retired officers, we were, we were officers, we're going to, uh, help them, some days. Well, every, 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 to see, you know, issues, uh, it's always, I think, a chunk up here, it's all, it's, it's, I don't know. I'll tell. Waiting for shots. Um, often it concerns, uh, public safety police, uh, the big one, call, like, uh, unholding officers' life, uh, city, and personal life, for, yeah, to do, um, there's already a policy in place.
Do you, do you, or, or?
Yeah, if you, if you break civil rights of the hospital, like, you, you, like, uh,
I'm around here, so, like, I, I, I've seen both sides of that, yeah.
But, um, it's, it's just creepy, that, someone did passes, and, you know, see that. I wonder, I need to, um, like, uh, judges, there, there, we have, there. Oh. It's, uh, yeah, I have a personal liability, it's, it's, uh. It's, it's, uh, all the, uh, all the, uh, laws as far as, as far as, that, that, if there's, if a police, uh, uh, the, once restrained, or, or. Or, you, you, or, 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 I was, pretty, across the state. Yeah, if you were to talk, talk more of laws, there's a lot of films that refer to towards, uh, traffic laws, like, distractions, uh, you do, first law, top side, and, and all that plays the, uh, traffic safety, uh, safety. Pursuits, uh, you know, uh, back and forth, uh, a, uh, pretty much, a witness that was, where you can't pursue, and then, it's, 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 suspicion.
It is 7:56 and the counsel is back from executive session. And I believe we have a motion regarding the discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation.
I would make a motion to authorize the city attorney to pursue litigation in the Harris case.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Regarding discussion on property of acquisition, the, there were no decisions made in that discussion. Okay, with that, next meeting is a joint council meeting, that's next, well, no, I guess it's a couple Wednesdays away, February 7th, and at six o'clock. So we will see you then. Thank you. We are adjourned.